Thank you. So it is 6:11 PM on Tuesday, June 19th, and I am calling the meeting of the Policy Committee of the Board of Education to order. Present this evening are myself, Mr. Guarino, and Donna Fitzpatrick from Administration. Mr. Moser was not available by phone this evening, although we've tried a couple times. However, two out of three still makes a quorum, so we're going to go ahead and go forward and go through the things on the agenda. So unless you have any objections to that, I'd like to just dive right in. Are you good?
Fine.
Excellent. Okay. So the first item on the agenda this evening is the policy BDF. Now, this is a policy regarding our advisory committees to the Board. I'm sure you recall this policy has been brought up multiple times in our regular Board meetings over the last, I would say, six weeks regarding the Strategic Planning Committee, because we had made a motion a couple months ago to make the Strategic Planning Committee an ad hoc committee. And there's been discussions about whether or not it should follow our advisory committee policy. I have spoken to Attorney Bolton, and he explained to me that ad hoc committees are simply advisory committees that have been created for a purpose. So to make that clear, that any ad hoc committee that we establish as a Board, including the Strategic Planning Committee, should be following our current policy for advisory committees to the Board, I'm suggesting that we add in the first paragraph that the Board may rely on advisory committees, including ad hoc committees, to cancel it. I don't have any other proposed changes. The last time this was reviewed was 2008. So I'm open to any comments or suggestions you have, Mr. Guarino, or any other information you have, Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
I think since we have asked counsel for their opinion, and Mr. Bolton, and I think I am perfectly willing to go along with what counsel has to say. Ad hoc committees are, as he says, you know, advisory. They are actually advisory, and they focus on a certain specific subject. So I think this is a good change. So I'm perfectly willing to support it. It's not a big change in the policies, just a small change, so I'm willing to support it.
Okay. Hopefully, the rest of the Board feels the same, because hopefully, this will clarify when we are having discussions about strategic planning, that they do have to follow the policies we already have. So can we have consensus on a motion to bring it to the full Board?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. The second item on the agenda this evening is policy BEDB, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination. This is one that has gone before the Policy Committee, and then it went to the full Board at our last full meeting where we discussed policies. And there was some discussion about some of the proposed language changes. So I did refer, again, I saw advice from counsel, and I also looked up Robert's Rules Guidelines to make sure that we were in compliance. And the suggestion that was made at the last full Board meeting regarding changing the agenda orders, requiring a two-thirds vote, was correct. So I have said, let's strike through majority and make sure that we comply with Robert's Rules, which says two-thirds. The other change here from the last time we talked about it was the line, "The Board may not revise Board policies or adopt new ones." I've added "at regular Board meetings unless there is an emergency." We had quite a conversation about the fact that we revise Board policies all the time in this committee, but there needs to be, there was feeling on the main Board that there needed to be a line allowing the main Board to revise policies or adopt new policies in cases of emergency at our regular Board meetings, even though that differs from our ordinary way of doing business, which would be to send a new policy down to this committee and then have it come up to the Board. Any discussion or thoughts on that?
Yes. I think that sentence should be revised. I know this policy has bounced back and forth, but the way this sentence reads, it says, "The Board may not revise Board policies or adopt new ones at regular Board meetings unless there is an emergency," sounds as though the Board can't adopt any policies at all unless there's an emergency. And I think it was written, the reason why it's there, and Ms. Fitzpatrick can tell me if I'm not on the right path here, but that I believe the reason why it was written is because the Board wanted, previous Boards had wanted recommendations from the Policy Committee before they adopt policies. They didn't just want policies to go over the Policy Committee into the Board. So I think, but the way they wrote it, it says that the Board can't adopt policies at all unless there's an emergency. So I think we ought to change this line, and I think it should say, "The Board should not revise Board policies or adopt new ones at regular Board meetings unless there is an emergency and unless policies are recommended by the Policy Committee," something like that.
Okay.
So I want to get Ms. Fitzpatrick's thoughts on that.
I think that probably that is the case, that they wanted to make sure that things went through the correct chain of command. I do want to make the point that, and I said this before, that I am not opposed to this language, but I still don't think it belongs in Agenda Preparation and Dissemination. I don't think something about adopting policies at Board meetings is part of an Agenda Preparation and Dissemination, unless it's specific to getting put on the agenda right before a meeting. But I just find it difficult to put this language within this policy, not that we shouldn't have it, but that it should be put in the proper place.
Agreed. I actually sat down with Tara to find out kind of the history of this, and we talked about if it could go in a different policy and make more sense, and there really wasn't a better place for it, which I think is why it ended up here. One thought on your suggestion, Mr. Guarino, I wonder if we should change the word "adopt" to "create," if that would resolve your objection? Because we are, you're correct, we do adopt policies at the regular Board meetings all the time. I think what Mrs. Van Twyver had said during the regular Board meeting was that there are circumstances where an emergency comes up that comes to the attention of the Board at a regular Board meeting, and there have been in the past where a policy needed to be created and enacted that day in order to meet a timeline or to address a specific out-of-the-ordinary problem. So I would like to honor her knowledge of what's gone before and keep a line that makes sense for her, but also make it make sense so that we are clear that regular Board meetings are for adopting policies that, you know, have been presented, vetted already, unless there's an emergency.
I think it does belong somewhere else. Do we have any other policies that, we don't have any other policies that, well, if we don't have any other policies that address it, I don't think there's a difference between the word "create" and "adopt." I think they kind of mean the same thing. I just think it ought to be clearly stated that the reason for this is that people on the Board want to make sure that policies that are adopted at the Board meetings first go through the Policy Committee, and I think that ought to be stated. If that's what they want, if that's what people want, then it should be actually stated in the language so that it's clear. Otherwise, it just says that the Board cannot create policies and, or adopt, I'm sorry, the Board cannot adopt policies, and that, it doesn't make any sense. It's like people know what it means, what they think it means, but what it means to other people just reading it, it means what it means. You know what I'm saying? So I think if we want it to mean that the policies should be recommended through the Policy Committee, then we ought to state that.
Okay.
So that it's clear.
So let me go back to your line. So we'll leave, "The Board may not revise Board policies or adopt new ones at regular Board meetings unless there is an emergency." Try to think.
I have one language here if you want it. The way I want to, the way I think it should be written is, "The Board should," instead of "may," I would say "should," "The Board should not revise Board policies or adopt new ones at regular Board meetings unless there is an emergency and unless the policies are recommended first by the Policy Committee." Just say what you mean, mean what you say.
So, "The Board should not revise Board policy or adopt new ones at regular meetings unless there is an emergency, comma, and?"
And unless, and unless the policies are first.
Vetted?
Are recommended first by the Policy Committee.
Okay. I would like to say "or," unless the policies, because that will allow for the emergency or the regular doing of business.
Sure.
Or unless the policies were recommended through or vetted from.
Are recommended, are recommended previous by the, or first by the Policy Committee.
Any advice? Unless the policies are recommended by Policy Committee. Unless there's an emergency or unless the policies are recommended. Yeah, I'm just, standing in the agenda, I'm just trying to read if we mention any other committees. Oh, actually, we should say, because in here it says multiple times, it mentions appropriate standing committees, so I'm just going to write "by the appropriate standing committee." Does that make sense? Yes, it's the Policy Committee, but sometimes something might come through HR if it's an HR policy.
That's a good point, yeah.
And that way, the language stays consistent through the document. And hopefully, this will satisfy Mrs. Van Twyver, because I take her point, it was a good one. Yep. The other item that we did not change for this particular meeting that was presented to the Board last time was as far as when the agendas, when the materials for the agenda needed to get to the deadline for submitting agenda items. It had been for the last two years, it was 9:00 AM on the Thursday before the meeting. Prior to that, it was seven days, and our administrative staff have asked that we make it 4:30 PM on the Tuesday before the meeting, so that they have enough time to get the agendas together and also do their other administrative tasks, because it's becoming kind of a Herculean task to do all of that work. When everything gets there Thursday morning, then the agenda still has to be finalized, and then they can make all the photocopies for the nine of us and send them out. And so it tends to take over their Thursday afternoon and Friday morning entirely, whereas if everything is in by the end of the day Tuesday, the agenda can be finalized Wednesday. If there's any problems, they have enough time to manage that. So I personally would like to keep this 4:30 PM Tuesday. I think that's the respectful thing to do. We tried something, it's not working the way it could. I feel like let's compromise with them. Is that acceptable? Okay. So can, let's, can we have a consensus on a motion to send policy BEDB to the main Board with the changes being to return to the two-thirds in the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, and the sixth paragraph shall read, "The Board should not revise Board policies or adopt new ones at regular Board meetings unless there is an emergency or unless the policies are recommended by the appropriate standing committee." Okay. Yes?
I vote yes.
Excellent. Okay. And then the next several go together. So I've been trying to go through our policies, our own Policy Committee, policy says that we are to review all of our district policies every four years. I believe that's also the law, and I have found quite a few that are still numbered that haven't been reviewed in over 10 years. So each month, I'm trying to put a few on the agenda for us to review. And so this month, I found, if you look on the agenda, I found three policies, 1120, 1230, and 1231, which are all related to hearings and complaints. And when I was looking for the appropriate letters to reclassify them from numbers to letters, I found that the New Hampshire School Board Association has policies that match up very well with these under the appropriate letters. So I thought we should compare and see if we want to adopt the language that is recommended by the New Hampshire School Board Association, because currently, our policy 1220 kind of squishes it all in together, and 1230 also squishes all types of complaints together, whereas the School Board Association policies KE, KEB, and GBK breaks them down, so it's easy to find what you should do with the type of complaint that you have. If you have a public complaint, if you have a public complaint about school personnel, or if you have an employee complaint, what the steps are, instead of having them squished together in one policy, which is kind of what we had before in the numbered policies. So I know they're on the agenda in order, I'm happy to look at them individually. So if we go in order on the agenda, we have policy KE, which is public complaints, and then policy KEB, which is public complaints about school personnel. Those correspond to our current policy 1230, which needs to be updated. So our current policy says, "All complaints shall be presented and referred in writing to the superintendent, who may at his or her discretion refer the complaints to the Board of Education." And then it talks about complaints about discipline for students and how parents or guardians should behave, and that is to, one, contact the principal, two, contact the superintendent, and then any complaints to the Board or appeals to the ruling of the superintendent need to go to the superintendent first and then back to the Board. So if a person in the public, according to a policy 1230, had a complaint that they wanted to bring to a Board member, according to our policy, we should be sending it to the superintendent, and then if needed, it can come back to us. So the updated policies from the New Hampshire School Board Association, they've broken this one into two. The first one is KE, and it says, "Public complaints." And I took this language directly from their recommendations. I haven't made any changes at all to them, so I'm open to discussion. So it says, "While the Board recognizes this obligation to be available to the public at all times, it also believes that individual complaints can usually be resolved most effectively by parties directly concerned. The Board will refer all complaints through the proper administrative channels for solution before investigation or action. Exceptions are complaints that concern Board actions or Board operations only. The Board therefore will not hear complaints from individual parents until such complaints have been raised first with the teacher and if not resolved successfully with, successively with the department head, principal, and superintendent." We probably should add assistant superintendent in there. So when I saw this policy KE, to me, it very much sounded exactly like numbers two and three of our policy 1230, which says complaints about, let's see, sorry, complaints about parents, parents' complaints regarding their children should go to the teacher, then the principal, then the superintendent, which is exactly what paragraph two says on our policy 1230. So I don't see anything that is, I don't see any conflict between these two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing that I see is that one requires writing, appeals in writing, and the other one doesn't. The other one just says, "Individual complaints will be referred." So I'm not, maybe, maybe Ms. Fitzpatrick can help us understand if that's, how important that is to have it in writing, or, because that's the way it was, the old one says, it should be in writing.
Yep. When I was researching this, we have policy 1231, which isn't a policy, in fact, it's an intake complaint form, so I don't know why that would be called a policy. But either way, at some point in time, we had this form that people were supposed to be filling out when they had a complaint. As far as I can tell from talking to people, this, no one has seen this form. I don't know anyone at Administration or teachers or principals who have received one of these forms when a parent has a problem. It seems to me that the way that people are typically going about things are that they call up or email the teacher or the principal. Sometimes they go to the school and ask to speak to the teacher or principal. And I don't, personally, I feel like parents should have that option, that you shouldn't have to write a letter if you have an issue with their child and the way that they're being treated at school. You should be able to go to the school and try and resolve it quickly without having to write, fill out, you know, this form or write a formal letter.
I can say that once it reaches Central Office, we do ask parents, whether it's through email or a letter, to put it in writing so we can be clear about what the issue is and how it's been tried to be resolved and what the result has been, so that we are moving forward from that point versus going back to everything that's already been done since. So we do, at that point, ask them just to put it in writing for us so we can be clear about what their complaint is.
So I guess the question then is, do you think that we need a line in here? Because it says, "The Board won't hear complaints," which we don't, we already follow this policy, that if someone, and I get emails all the time, if someone emails me with an issue, I refer them, I find out who the appropriate principal is and refer it to the principal. So should we put a line in there until complaints have been raised with the teacher, if not resolved, the department head, the principal, assistant principal, no, assistant superintendent and superintendent? Do we need a line after that, that complaints to assistant superintendents need to be in writing, or should we wait and let, have a parent still have the right to come and just talk?
I don't think that that needs to be part of the policy. I think it's more of a procedure. And so, and parents do still have a right to come in and meet with us and visit about the issue without putting it in writing, but if it's something that it gets complicated, then we ask them to put it in writing so we can clearly understand what all the issues are.
Okay.
Sometimes it's a simple thing that we can discuss and resolve quickly.
Go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So procedure is different than policy. You've adopted, you have procedures where you require that it be in writing. Is that, is that correct?
To be clear, not in every situation, but there have been situations that it can be very confusing about what exactly the complaint is.
Yeah.
In those situations, it's good to have it in writing so you can clearly understand what it is that they're upset about and their suggested resolution, but that is not always the case.
Right. So that's why, and I'm not trying to be a stick in the mud, I'm just trying to make, trying to make sure that all parties are, you know, have procedures here so that there isn't any confusion, you know? Maybe we could refer to procedure, maybe we could put a line in here that says, "Refer to superintendent's procedures documenting the complaints," or something like that. Do you think it's necessary?
I don't know. I guess, for me, I want to make, so I think my goal in updating these policies is to, one, make it very clear and easy for, for parents especially, but anyone who's a caregiver for a child, to know exactly what to do when they have a concern about their child in school, like who's the first person they can talk to, and if they're not happy, who's the second person, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't want to put anything that would impede their ability to access some sort of remediation for their problem. And I, you know, especially if we have, it's our English language learners, you know, and I'm thinking about those parents may not have enough working knowledge of English to be able to put something in writing. And they certainly still have a right to go to the principal, to the assistant superintendent, to the superintendent, and, you know, the school has an obligation to provide a translator. I would, I would very much like to make sure that we keep it as accessible as possible. The other benefit I see to a policy where it is clearly laid out is that at the end of, at the end of the sequence of complaints, if a parent is still unsatisfied with what the superintendent says, so they've gone through all the steps, which could potentially happen very quickly if they're calling, you know what I mean? If you call the principal and you don't like it, there's no, nothing here that says you can't call the assistant superintendent 10 minutes later, you know? So I don't want to drag this stuff out. But I also want the Board to be able to be as neutral as possible if it comes to our level. So if a parent has gone through all those and is still unhappy with the resolution, it's important to me that we have a policy saying that you start and you go up the chain instead of starting with us and then kind of we go down it, so that the parent still has that due process right of having, you know, us as a neutral body to say whether we agree with what the superintendent decided or not. So those are kind of my two things. I just, I hate to muck it up, requiring stuff in writing. I do think that it's a good idea if one has the capacity to be documenting things in email so that it's, everyone has a clear idea, but I don't want to require it as a matter of policy, because again, I'm thinking of something where, you know, something happened, your child was, I don't know, bullied, or you felt like the teacher was behaving in a way that was shameful to the child. You want to be able to resolve that the next day. You don't want to have to wait to like write something up, get a printer, bring it in, you know? So I don't know. Any other comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, that makes sense. I don't want anybody to be impeded. I think you, I think you make a good case for leaving it the way it is. I'm fine with that.
Okay. So I do think we need to add the assistant superintendent right before, and superintendent, so that it's clear all of the steps that people can take, because we have assistant superintendents. And I know they're not in the original policy, but I assume that that's because they didn't exist when the original policy was made back in 2003. So that's policy KE. So that's policy KE. So I would like to have consensus on a motion to send policy KE to the main board for approval.
Yes, I vote yes.
Great, I also vote yes. The second one on the list is policy KEB. And this one's a little bit different, because it is regarding public complaints about school personnel. It may be that someone has had a conflict or a complaint about an employee of the district, and that person who has the complaint is not a parent. Perhaps they are a community member or someone else who has had an interaction that they feel was inappropriate or unacceptable. They too have a right to make complaints, and I feel like they should be able to easily access the procedure, or the steps that they would, they take to do that. And this one, this one is also kind of, this one is also included in our old policy 1230. So in our old policy 1230, number three says complaints to the board shall be presented to the superintendent and then back. Our policy doesn't really talk about the public at large, it just says, "Discipline or children." Am I missing something?
In number one, it says, "Any complaints."
Any complaints, okay.
So that...
Oh, good.
And then number two specifies parents and discipline.
Okay. So the National School Board Association has KEB, and it states, "The board places trust in its employees and desires to support their actions in such a manner that employees are freed from unnecessary, spiteful, or negative criticism and complaints. Whenever a complaint is made directly to the board as a whole or to a board member as an individual, it shall be referred to the school administration for study and possible solutions. The individual employee involved shall be advised of the nature of the complaint and shall be given an opportunity for explanation, comment, and presentation of the facts. The superintendent shall resolve the matter and report to the board." So again, I feel like this makes it fair. One, that people in the public have a right to complain, everyone has a right to complain, but also that employees have a right to have their say as well. We don't just assume that they have done something wrong without having superintendent and admin investigate. Again, I don't think that board members ought to be investigating, I think that is the purview of administration.
I agree.
Okay. One question I have for you, Mr. Guarino, is are you satisfied with the final line where it says, "The superintendent shall resolve the matter and report to the board?"
Yes.
And I believe, I'm trying to decide if, if it isn't resolved, what's the next step? Like if the, if the public person isn't satisfied with the resolution that the superintendent
People have the ability to file a complaint with the Department of Education.
Should we put that in there?
That's a good question.
Because our old policy 1220 allowed for persons, any persons, to request a hearing at the board. I fear that if we do away with 1220 without having a line, that we're taking a step
Technically...
And I should have asked Mr. Bolton about this, if...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not...
If the board has the authority to have a hearing and a resolution over a complaint like this.
Not necess, I mean, it depends on the complaint and whether or not the DOE has a finding. And people, I think we probably should consult.
Okay.
I apologize, I should have thought of that before.
No, me as well, I didn't, you know, as I was reviewing this, and originally, I was like, well, that makes sense, he's going to report it to the board and then we'll know. But on the other hand, I want to make sure that we don't remove a policy without having a replacement that makes sense, but also that we don't, I want to make sure that everyone's rights are being respected.
And I do, we can check with Attorney Bolton, but it seems as if, if a person decided to go directly to the DOE, that's a different process. So I'm not sure that the policy would apply regardless.
Right. All right, so I'm going to make a note to myself to check with Attorney Bolton, or Attorney Clausen, whoever's available, regarding steps.
Clausen.
Um?
Clausen.
What did I say?
I thought you said Clausen, yeah.
Oh, okay. Regarding steps, if public is not satisfied. So I would suggest that we table this one, and I will check with him next month, for next month, and have it come back.
I agree, tabled, I vote for table.
So we have consensus.
Until consulted.
Excuse me.
Consultation with...
And I'm taking things out of order a little bit, but I'm going to ask that we also table then rescinding of 1220, because to me, these are similar. I don't want to rescind 1220, saying people have the right for a hearing that they can request in writing if we don't have another vehicle to do that.
Which, which one is that?
1220.
1220. 12, how come it's not listed here? It's rescinded 1220.
Let's see, it's one, two, three, seven, no. Oh, you're right.
It's not here anymore.
Oh, you know what, it's, there's a typo on the agenda, it says 1120 instead of 1220.
Oh, this is supposed to be 1220.
Yep.
1220, hearings, right?
Yep.
Okay, so table, I vote also for tabling this, this motion.
We agree.
Yes.
Okay. Just set that one aside so I don't lose it. And then the last new one is policy GBK, which is regarding employee complaints and grievances. So currently, we only have that policy 1220, which says, persons, so anyone, desiring a hearing, can imply in writing for the board for a hearing five days prior to the scheduled meeting, stating definitely and clearly the reason for the request and the action desired on it. And then the board has to vote on whether or not to have a hearing. And then persons at hearings shall not comment on any other matters before the board, nor address the board unless they are invited to do so. I think that refers to like people in the audience, not people involved. To me, this is not sufficient for even our current policy on grievances. I don't believe that we require the union to write to the board within five days before our meetings, to say we would like to have a hearing on something, and then have to vote on whether or not we're going to allow it, and then schedule it. That seems overly tedious and unfair. So I'd very much like to make sure that we have something, a policy that makes it very clear that employees have the right for grievance hearings, grievance hearings, and that we're not going to make, obtaining them overly burdensome. So the New Hampshire State, I'm sorry, the New Hampshire School Board Association has this policy GBK, employee complaints and, employee complaints and grievances. The board will establish an orderly, well-defined grievance procedure for the resolution of problems derived from application of the board. Grievances will be handled expeditiously in accordance with procedures approved by the board. The machinery set up, machinery set up the resolution of grievances and collective bargaining agreements between the board and recognized employee organizations will apply only to grievances as defined in the particular agreement. So, not being a lawyer, I'm reading this, and as that we will follow the grievance procedures as they are outlined in each of our contracts.
With time limits and so forth for how each step happens.
Yes, what the, what each individual negotiated contract states is what we have a policy that we will follow. We are not, we don't have the privilege to deviate from that, it's unfair. We also here, it says, "We'll have a procedure for people who want to file grievances for, you know, things that the board has decided to do," which again, typically are things that the union leadership feels that we have made inappropriate decisions and would like to file agreements. Want to make sure that they have the right to do that, clearly defined, and I don't think it was clearly defined before.
So in our old, I have a question, in our old policies, these employee complaints and grievances are not even stated anywhere, is that?
No.
Okay.
We just have 1220 that says hearings.
Yeah.
That you have to apply in writing five days prior to the meeting, and then we have to vote on if we're going to have the hearing, and then we can't have the hearing without a vote. And I just, I don't think that's, I don't think that applies to grievances, and I don't think it, I don't think it would be fair to ask it applied, to apply to grievances. We have things set up in employee contracts about how they go about asking for agreements, they have a right to a grievance, and we have to make sure that there is no impediment to them having their grievance heard.
No, I agree. I agree.
Do you have any language changes, any issues that you think would make this more suitable for our particular district?
The only question I have is at the beginning, the board will establish, it's my understanding the board already has an orderly, well-defined grievance procedure.
Is that in our policies?
That's a great ques, I was just thinking in terms of some of the...
What is our current grievance procedure?
It's what's defined in the contracts.
Okay.
Okay.
So I would say, we've complied with the policy by having an established one, I don't, hmm, resolution of problems. Yeah, I think I'm personally fine with it, because it allows for us, should we enter a new bargaining agreement, to be able to establish procedures in that one, do you know what I mean? I don't want to say the board will follow currently established, because that might limit the bargaining ability for future contracts.
That makes sense.
So, that's my only thought there. I want to make sure that, again, that employees' rights are protected under these policies. Go ahead, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. What about employees that don't have contracts? Do, do they have a grievance procedure?
That's a good question. Currently, they would file a complaint with the supervisor of, right, so the assistant superintendent or the superintendent?
Depending on what their role is, but they are at-will employees, which is a little bit different than a contractual employee. But I do think that there's still vehicles for them to file complaints. For example, if somebody was let go from a job, they have a right to file that they were unjustly let go, or file for unemployment. And unemployment makes the decision whether or not they get denied, it's not a school district decision, those sorts of things. I just, it's different for at-will employees.
Who are our at-will employees?
There aren't many.
What are the classifications?
Unaffiliated.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, who, like, what categories of employees do we have currently that are unaffiliated?
Assistant superintendents, some of the, some of the administrative assistants. I believe there's, I'm trying to think what other, there's not a lot, I know that.
So hypothetically, should an assistant superintendent or an administrative assistant feel that they were treated unfairly by their supervisors, which would be probably the superintendent, I feel like they have a right to appeal, and that would be appealed to the board, because that would be the next highest?
Right, I just don't know if due process has, if there needs to be a separate policy for people to get due process, that's the law, versus a policy.
Right. Well, I mean, they have that, I'm just wondering if having a grievance procedure would allow us to make sure that they have their due process as well.
I want to be clear, so what you're suggesting is if we leave the language like it is, then it allows for that flexibility to make sure that that option is there for unaffiliated?
I, I think it does.
Okay.
Do you have a different read, Mr. Guarino?
No, if, if we leave it the way it is, then it, it says that the board will establish an orderly grievance procedure for the resolution of problems derived from application of the board. Maybe we should say the board or, or the superintendent, in this way, since the superintendent is basically the, you know, runs, runs the district regarding employees, you know, hiring and firing, et cetera, that, that if there are, that they, they could set up an internal grievance, because i- if someone is unhappy, we don't want them to go have to be outside the district before they start, you know, at unemployment and start filing grievances, you know? We want to resolve it internally, if possible. So, so if, if maybe we could just sort of, the board will establish an orderly, well-defined grievance procedure, or the board, or the superintendent, or something to that effect, to give the superintendent some leeway there, to create a, to create an avenue for, for some of the employees that are unaffiliated that, that might be, that might need this.
Hmm.
I mean, I don't, I, I think that way they were covered.
I agree that the nine of us probably aren't the most knowledgeable on setting up grievance procedures.
Right.
Without, you know, constant consulting, all sorts of...
Right, so you want...
We could say the district.
Right, right, the, yeah, the district will establish, yeah.
And that would mean the board and the superintendent.
The board and the superintendent, right. That way, the superintendent can be in consult with the human resources director, and they are, you know, they understand, you know, they'll be able to put together something like that for unaffiliated.
The only thing is there, is it says, the, the end of that sentence is, "For a procedure for the resolution of problems derived from the application of the board." I read that as, this is the procedure you go through if we take, if we make a motion and take a vote, and people are unhappy about what we did, you know what I mean? Or they feel like it violates their rights in some way.
Oh, okay, so, so what they're saying is that, we, when we resolve problems through the application of the board, so, so when we make decisions and people are still unhappy, then we, is that what this is saying?
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could incorporate our old 1220 in here, because it says, "The board will establish an orderly, well-defined grievance procedure for the resolution of problems derived from application of the board." And then, like, the procedure might be our old 1220, which is, "Persons desiring a hearing must apply in writing," do you know what I mean? That would be a reasonable procedure. Person, because we have one that, that covers employees... Person, 'cause we have one that, that covers employees. We have, the second paragraph here applies to employee grievances, and saying that we must follow the collective bargaining agreements. So we're just looking for something to resolve what will cover individuals who aren't covered by a collective bargaining agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So I wonder if, um, this 1220 should be, what is, what do we usually call it when it's the next thing? You know what I mean?
Oh, it would be like GBKR.
GBKR. Like, we could perhaps change 1220 to GBKR.
Oh, okay, I understand. And then add that second sentence? Are you...
I, I would say that this, this, 'cause this hearing sounds like a procedure.
Did, did we table 1220?
We did.
We did.
Okay.
Can we take it off the table and talk about it again?
Sure.
Okay.
I agree.
It's untabled, okay, so. We could do all of our talking and then make motions at the end, when it's just two of us.
I think I'm just confused about where do you want to insert this?
I don't know.
Okay. Because we definitely want the second...
The second has to be there.
Because that's specifically about collective bargaining agreements and following their procedures.
Right.
Okay.
So, to me, the meat and potatoes of this policy on employee complaints and grievances is paragraph number two. We must follow the grievance procedure and collective bargaining agreements, period. They have a right, and we can't impede them on that. Then the question is, do we, as a board, want to expand the policy to cover people who might not be covered by collective bargaining agreements?
So if you were going to incorporate the part of the hearing around writing a letter and asking for a hearing, I would, instead of saying persons, I would qualify it as unaffiliated employees.
Okay.
Because if you leave it persons, then I think it's, it's confusing with the one that we already talked about with parent complaints.
Well, perhaps we leave paragraph one alone, 'cause it seems like that's, it says, we're gonna establish a well-defined procedure, and then the second paragraph says, here's the procedure, if you have a collective bargaining agreement, the procedure is we follow what it says in there. And then third paragraph would say, unaffiliated employees desiring a hearing must apply in writing. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
Excuse me. And then, um, should we keep, should we keep in here the current policy of requiring a vote before we allow the hearing?
That's a question for you.
Mr. Guarino, do you have a feeling about that?
I, I think we should leave it in.
Okay. And then the last line here in 1220 is, "Persons at hearing shall not comment on any matters before the board nor address the board unless they are invited to do so." I assume there was a reason that was put in at some point, perhaps people got rowdy in the audience. I have not personally experienced people shouting out of turn in the audience, so I don't know how helpful that line is.
I think we should leave it in.
You do?
Yes.
I think it would be a matter of, if I'm correct, non-public meetings, if the grievance wants to have it public, they have that right?
Yes.
So if it, a situation presented itself where someone wanted to have it a public meeting, you would wanna have a mechanism for people in the audience to be told that they need to be quiet.
Okay, I think that's fair. One small thing is it says, "Persons desiring a hearing before the school board," I'm just gonna write "board" and not "school board," because we don't actually use that terminology here in Nashville.
And you're gonna make it unaffiliated employees?
Yep, I wrote, "Unaffiliated employees desiring a hearing before the board must apply in writing," and then I'm not making any other changes.
And would that become number three?
Paragraph three, yes.
The only reason I ask is because most of our policies are numbered by paragraphs.
There?
I think so. I stand corrected.
I think we just count them when we're talking about them. Apply in writing, dot, dot, dot. I'm just gonna write rest of text. 1220, so we don't have to sit here while I write stuff down. Okay, so...
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Since we are taking most of 1220 and incorporating it into one of the new policies, should we not, we did table it, we untabled it, but now should we...
We should probably rescind it.
Okay.
Yeah.
First, let's make a motion, let's make a motion to send GBK as amended to the full board.
I agree.
Okay, so we have consensus to send GBK to the full board as amended, and then, moving down, the next item would be to rescind 1220, because we have incorporated it in our new lettered system.
I agree.
Okay, so consensus to rescind. And then I'd like to rescind 1230. We discussed this at length, and it is incorporated in policy, uh, KE, KE?
I agree.
So we will rescind K, uh, 1230, because it has been replaced. And then the last one that I would like to rescind is 1231, which is the school district interview intake form, which is a form that was on our website that no one ever uses regarding complaints. I don't think people should be required to fill out a form in order to make a complaint, I just think it's cumbersome.
I agree.
Okay, so we have consensus to rescind that one. And so that is everything that I have on my agenda for this evening. So we're leaving this with, we have tabled, wait, we have tabled KEB, public complaints about school personnel, and I will follow up with some advice from our attorney to see if that is something that is applicable to our district and how we can make it make sense for our district. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I have one question.
Absolutely.
On, on some of these, uh, that we changed the language on, is that going to get to Jackie so that she could put the motions correctly when, when she records them? 'Cause you, you took down the language, I didn't have the language on some of these.
Uh, yes, I can call her and give her the language.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah.
No problem.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll email her, like, photocopy and email her, that way it'll be easier. So, our next meeting is July, I have moved, hold on, let me just, let me just double-check the calendar. Typically, we are the third Tuesday of July, however, I will be out of town that week for our family reunion, so we are going to do the next meeting on Tuesday, July 24th, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. I am continuing to go through old numbered policies and seeing if there are letters that are immediately applicable to them to get them up to date, or if we need to create new ones, or what we need to do with them. Did you have any other requests or things that you wanted to see on future agendas, Mr. Guarino?
Nope, I'm all set.
Okay, should you think of any, please feel free to email me. So, with consensus, I'd like to adjourn.
Yes.
Yes, excellent. So we are adjourned at 7:13 PM. Thank you.